I'll tell them yours. Don't tell the chief, don't call him. That looks like a mud puddle.
You gotta have a call for your computers. It's password management, it's driving me crazy. Ten, fifteen minutes and you gotta sign back out on the field. You're not even driving me back. And I know it's part of what you gotta have. Cyber security.
Unfortunately.
Unfortunately, that's correct, but it's part of that. You gotta have a computer. You gotta have an email.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, sir.
Okay, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. And we will begin with a prayer, we have John Lender here to open stuff.
And so Father God, we thank you for this evening, and we thank you for every person in this room, God. And we thank you, Lord, for your grace, and for your wisdom, and for your mercy that leads us, guides us, and sustains us as we seek your will. We ask, Lord, that your peace would be in this place this evening, and God, that you would lead us on the path of righteousness as we seek your will. We pray these things in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, let's do a roll call, please. Alvin Linder?
Present.
Alvin Nelson?
You said me, I'm here.
Alvin Linder?
Here.
Alvin Lender?
Here.
Alvin Hopper?
Here.
Alvin Rubble? Alvin Rubble?
Okay, next on the agenda, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion. And a second. Okay, in all no favor?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? Motion passes. Okay, next is time for public comments. Do you have anybody? Public comments.
I got one as a private citizen. Went to Coopole today, ran errands. Our street guys do a much better job of patching streets than they do in Coopole. And also, the sanitation workers, the guys on the trash truck, those guys work. I don't know about the rest of the city employees, but those are the ones that I notice.
Thank you, and I'm sure they will appreciate hearing that. I will certainly pass that on tomorrow. Positive comments are always welcome, too, so... Okay, next on the agenda, additions or deletions. I do have one small addition, and I will make that under new business, make it number four. And it is a resolution about our cybersecurity policy that we needed to update, and I need to add that to the agenda, please. Can I have a motion to add that?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Lender in a second, not Alderman Dale. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Is there any old business? Okay, with no old business, we'll go down to new business, and we will start with Zach from the chamber, if he will come and give us a report. Zach Stevens.
I'm so glad Jean and I did not have to do a little fighting via Zoom, and I could go first because I need to go to the county commission meeting after this, so I'm gonna be really quick. I'm gonna pass out a report from Pink Tennessee. They're a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization based out of Nashville. Last month, and Lori got to hear from the president of that organization, came and gave a presentation to her board of directors, and what they do is collect data on every single Tennessee county. And she gave us a deep dive into Livingston, Overton County, and highlighted some of the areas we're doing really well in, and some of the areas we need improving. Some of the areas we're doing really well, despite the housing costs and issues that people have for rentals. We actually ranked really well in Tennessee for rental affordability. We also ranked really well in childbirth rate, number two in the state. But there's some areas in which we're kind of hurting, or not doing so well in. For example, 18.8% of adults don't have an education beyond high school in Overton County. That's number 79 out of 95 counties in Tennessee. Our median household income is at $39,737. That's number 90 out of 95 counties in Tennessee. And I'm gonna share all this with you here in just a second. We also have some reading proficiency in third graders. The reason I'm sharing this is, of course, it's important to the business community, and the community more broadly, especially whenever we want to recruit businesses and retain them here. But anyways, I'm gonna leave it at that. If you have any questions, after I pass this out, feel free to give me a call. I'd be glad to talk to you if you have any specifics in there, but otherwise, any questions now? Good?
Big stack. This is nine time ready.
I was hoping you were going over all of this.
No, I'm not going to.
Okay, I think Zach has finished with his presentation. Zach from the Chamber of Commerce, thank you so much. Okay, Jean, you're up.
All right, can I hear you again?
I got it.
Good deal. So, John, I've got a quote in your packet from the Quick-Ring Ice Skating Company. And as I mentioned to you when we did our audit at first of the year of last year, we were looking to invest in things that were going to be long-lasting and beneficial for us for quite a while. Over the last couple, three years, at Christmas in the country, we have rented an ice skating rink to go down at the park, and that was extremely productive, and it was extremely well enjoyed by everybody in the community, and people from around the community, from around the county. And we, during those times we rented it, it was a pretty high cost, probably exceeding $10,000 per year to do that. So what we've done is we're proposing to purchase an ice skating rink that we can put down at the park. It'll be a 40-by-60 synthetic ice skating rink that comes with the fencing to go around it, the skates, the sharpener for the skates, the terrain is all included. And we plan on, or propose to keep that open from Christmas in the country, the day after Thanksgiving, all the way through New Year's. Comes in four-by-four pieces, it can be stored easily, easily. We can store it there in the old Twin Lakes building there beside Steel Coop. It has a five-year warranty and a 15-year lifespan. And we do have funds still remaining in our last year's budget to purchase this at a price of $49,565. So I'm going to be asking for your approval to make that purchase so that we can have, we would be one of the only communities in the Fertuna with a skating rink besides for McMinnville on the leave. And they've had a very successful program. We've seen what they've done with it, and it works very well for them, and they highly recommended it. So I'd like to ask your approval to make that purchase, considering the fact that we do have funds still available in our budget.
Jean, this is Bridget. Do we have income coming from this, or is it just a free fee thing that we give to the community?
During special events, we would make it free during Christmas in the country, for example, special event during those days, and then we have talked about a fee of about $5 per 15 minutes to skate during the other days of all the special events. And it would be manned by seasonal employees, who would, city employees, that would have, actually create a few jobs during the wintertime. So it would be a small fee, but it would help pay for itself.
Where would we store their equipment at?
It would be stored at the Twin Lakes building there beside Steel Coop. It comes in four-by-four pieces, so it can be taken apart and easily stored.
That is in the budget?
Yes, sir. Well, there's money still in the book that we had an excess last year. We anticipated excess of about $250,000. And we have had some cost overrun with the courthouse plaza project, but that was not all that. It was, I think, $16,000, $20,000, something like that, Mayor, is that correct? That we had to pay out. We also did the purchase of the people labor, but we still have an excess fund, and we anticipate getting our new funds probably in the next week or two.
I'll make a motion to do this. I think it'd be good for the kids in the wintertime.
Well, I think the goal was, too, is, you know, if we can use this over the next several years, and we have been doing, you know, something, send it to be advertised in the newspaper to get those bids and delay our process. So, anyway, so we did need to consider adopting our own purchasing policy. We don't have a bid threshold in our charter right now, or our municipal code, and we actually don't have a purchasing policy either. But because of the change in the law, we need to work on our own, okay? So I'm suggesting adopting the bid threshold of $25,000 that we don't have to advertise for, but we would, again, we would still get, you know, the estimates for that, it just wouldn't have to be a delay in getting those bids back. So I would like to entertain a motion to consider adopting a purchasing policy and a resolution adopting the bid threshold of $25,000.
So what you're saying is, you want $25,000, but you don't have to run it in the paper that you'll still get bids, is that correct?
That is.
If it's more than 40% of $25,000, then you are supposed to give three estimates. If it's under 40% of $25,000, then you don't need estimates or bids. It's just an administrative burden to go through that process of getting estimates when it's faster to just purchase at the board at that way. So there won't be an advertisement, there won't be sealed bids for anything under $25,000 if the council chooses to set that bid threshold. Anything above it would require the competitive bids, sealed bids, unless there was an exception.
In other words, if it's under $25,000, you don't have to guess nobody, you just go out and buy it, correct?
Unless it's more than 40% of $25,000, which is, you gotta get three estimates, if there are three estimates available. You gotta try it, three estimates.
I still don't understand.
So, when you purchase something...
I actually want you to hear the microphone.
The missile purchasing law requires competitive bids, sealed bids, for all non-emergency, non-premierity purchases. The purchasing law used to contain a bid threshold that would allow us to make routine, everyday purchases without going through the bid process. The legislature has always recognized that since, I think, '83 when this law was passed. Last year, there was a change in the law that took out that minimum bid threshold, so now all cities have to establish their own threshold. Otherwise, just about every purchase would have to be competitively bid. So the General Assembly removed that bid threshold. We now need to establish our own, and the General Assembly allows every city in Tennessee to establish a minimum bid threshold of $25,000. It doesn't have to be $25,000, it can be $10,000, or $5,000. I think most cities that have considered this recently have adopted $25,000, but I know for a fact in Parth that it's still $10,000, and they considered it this year, so...
Explain what you were talking about, the 40% again.
Okay. Say we adopt a minimum bid threshold. Anything over that threshold has to be competitively bid with sealed bids. Advertising the paper, solicited bids, and selected based on the lowest and/or best bid. Anything under that threshold does not require competitive bids, but if the cost is 40% or more of what that threshold is, the law says you've gotta try and go out and get three estimates if you can. But it doesn't require a formal bid.
So 40% of $25,000, is that $10,000?
Yeah.
So anything below $15,000, you just buy?
Yes, it's but the law allows. Again, the minimum threshold doesn't have to be $25,000, but the General Assembly found that number to be appropriate for every city in the state, so...
Who signs the purchase orders?
Lori, you might have to help me with that, but as I understand it, department heads make routine purchases, or does everything have to come through your office, or how does that work?
Well, pretty much everything right now, because I'm trying to get a handle on everything that we do. I mean, they're calling me before they purchase anything at this point, get an authorization, so...
And that's the point of adopting a purchasing policy as well, so that we have a structured procedure for how things are supposed to go, and we would develop a procedure that works best for the city, and you all would be able to consider it and make comments on it before adopting it. Right now, the problem is we don't have a written down policy.
I don't know. From what I've heard, this is not a good thing. Somebody can spend $10,000 and nobody will know, except the person who wrote the purchase order.
No.
There we go, Steve.
No, it would, I mean, so if they want to purchase something, I mean, obviously, if it's budgeted, those are items that have already been approved, and we're still gonna be doing our due diligence even on those items to make sure that we're, you know, getting three bids when possible, when that service has those companies available. But they're not, they're not purchasing anything without running it through me, and, you know, they go to Phyllis to get the PO, so they're not just going out and purchasing on their own. I mean, unless it's, you know, we've got certain chemicals and things that we have some, we've had contracts for the last few years. I mean, the wastewater plant and the water plant always has those chemicals that are gonna be, you know, that have to be there. But no, people, they cannot go out and just purchase without authorization.
Right, department heads don't have like a debit card that they can spend money on.
Correct.
They don't, generally, as I understand it, they can make a purchase order to a vendor supplier, then that person worries, processes, develops, and then there's gotta be two signatures on any check that gets written. So there are safeguards in place for that. We're not suggesting that we give every department head or every employee a city debit card that they can go and spend money on.
Okay. I'll just use a lawnmower for instance. Say we set this at $25,000, airport needs a lawnmower. We'll go out and search for the best price, do you, correct?
But if it's under $10,000, you won't?
Well, that's the, that's the point of adopting a purchasing policy, so we can have a written policy that says city employees who are authorized to make purchases, or make orders for purchases that the city can make, have to consider the price and other available options.
I mean, we, the last thing that I, anybody asked for and purchased, you know, they brought three, and I told them I wanted to bring, you know, on paper, when that service is available, where we can get three bids. I mean, there's rarities, but sometimes there's not that many people in this area that might provide whatever that is, but asking for three bids on paper, so we have a record of that, so that, you know, keeps us in compliance.
And it's in the policy, which department heads have some control over that, and then it flows down to you to make a write in the approval?
That is correct. They may have a wish list, but they're gonna go get me those bids, and we're gonna go over it before, before it's purchased, if it's a larger purchase item like that.
I think if I'm understanding right, if it's, if it's under the threshold, they just don't have to run it in the paper?
Right.
Am I correct?
Yes.
But they still, it still has to go through Mayor Thorpe before they can...
Well, let me get a thorough understanding, okay? If the threshold's $25,000, okay, anything over $25,000 is just like it always was, right? If it's between 10 and 25, we're expected to give three quotes, or three estimates, correct? If it's under, if it's under $10,000 or the 40%, that's what it is, but we don't have to do anything other than buy.
Well, we would, we would have a city policy that you all adopt that says whoever is requesting that purchase has to consider all available options and what the best price is. So it would be our policy to pick something with the best price.
Okay, I'm just starting to work with this.
Can we get a written copy of the policy, like in Parth that I've got, so we can kind of take a minute to read it and understand it a little better?
Yes, and I think that was the mayor's suggestion, that you just adopt, decide what the purchasing threshold would be tonight, and then I would go back, create a written policy for you to consider the next meeting, and then we would have comments and discussion in a book on that. If the council isn't ready to adopt the threshold number tonight, then we can consider that all at the next meeting.
Well, I agree with you that we need a written purchasing policy, it's mounting. Every week in the paper almost is where some public official has absconded with some funds, almost every week. And it concerns me. $10,000, a lot of money to me. So I don't know, maybe we could put something in writing so that we could review it and understand it. Would that be okay with everybody?
And I think that's what he is suggesting, suggesting, is doing that and sending it to us, and then we can tweak it. But I will assure you that since I have been here, that everything that has been purchased, that I have made them even go back, if they said, oh, I've talked to so-and-so, and it's this, and so-and-so, it's this, and so, I said, I want you to bring me a piece of paper, and everybody makes every effort to get three estimates on their purchases. So, and that, you know, we can make some verbiage of whatever that looks like, is what I'm saying.
See, like you and the revenue to Hughes, I don't have a problem with that. That's the way I think it, maybe not you, but maybe Phyllis or somebody that takes a second look at anything that's over, in my opinion, $1,000. Anything, because that's pretty much every company I was in. We had a limit of over $1,000 that one of the staff had to approve it.
That's a long time ago.
Yeah, that'd be equivalent to about $5,000 now.
And that is currently happening, just to let you know that, that is happening right now, so...
Yeah, I'm happy with that, except for you.
And the example policy, can you just put like an X for an arbitrary number, we can talk about it next week?
We'll put a placeholder there for it.
Okay, so do I need a motion for moving forward with adopting this, or do we just need to bring it back to council next time with that?
You might wanna separate the two things out, ask for a motion on the purchasing threshold, and see if we have a motion on that. Because that could be, that actually could be taken tonight. Regardless, I think everyone is on the same page with considering a written policy.
A purchasing policy, okay. Okay, well, first let's consider that, so do I have a motion for us to prepare a purchasing policy to bring to council next week, next month?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Lender.
Second.
Second by Alderman Dale. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Do I have a motion on suggesting a bid threshold at this time for the bid threshold that we go on our resolution for next month?
Are you seeking $25,000? Is that what we're looking for? Patricia?
Well, I am suggesting $25,000, and that's very common in a lot of municipalities from what I've seen.
I'm writing the book.
Okay, I have a motion by Alderman Elder for the bid threshold to be at $25,000. Do I have a second?
You've never had this before. Motion, that's for a second.
Yeah, yeah, I have, I've never had this.
I'll make a motion for a placeholder until everybody can give more clarification on your bid, how about that?
Okay, all right. So we have a motion on the table to write our bid threshold resolution. We're gonna put a placeholder there for right now, and we're gonna think about it and discuss it a little further next month, so...
The motion is to adopt a bid threshold to be determined in such a way.
Okay, so the motion is to adopt a bid threshold. Okay. So the motion is to adopt a bid threshold and to be determined next meeting, so. All, you have?
When this hits the newspaper and everything, these vendors and everything is not gonna understand like we don't understand it. And they're gonna think that we're more or less just taking this in our own hands and counting them out, picking who we want to or whatever. And I think, I mean, I know you're wanting to do the best thing. And I trust you with everything, without doubt, without a doubt. But now I don't know how well this is gonna go over with the public.
Well, I would say that the vendors that we are, you know, are local people that we probably are getting our best bids from currently would be the ones that we would be seeking those from anyway. So I don't, I don't really think that there's gonna be a lot of change other than it being advertised in the newspaper, but that's, you know, my opinion.
I don't really think there'll be a lot of change either. But now, they may not understand. But that's my suggestion.
What was Rex's motion? Did he make a motion? I didn't understand it. Could you bring it back to me?
Well, he made a motion to start working on our bid threshold resolution and just put a placeholder in there instead of put the amount in there at this time. Any more discussion next month?
This has been years ago, and I'm sure things has changed. But I was thinking, like, anything over five thousand dollars has to be bid.
That was quite a while ago. It may have been five thousand at one point. More recently, it was ten thousand for quite a while. And then a few years ago, it got raised to twenty-five thousand.
The city of Livingston raised it to twenty-five thousand?
The Tennessee General said...
I'm talking about local folks, city leaders.
It slows down everything so much when you're talking about a number that's small. And I mean, I'm in business every day, and I see it. And it just, it just bogs things down when you're, when you're talking about limits of that demand. It just, it just does.
Which I understand five thousand dollars is a lot today.
Okay, so let's, all in favor of... Oh, I thought we got a second for, do you have a second? I'm so confused. Do we have a second for doing the bid threshold resolution and just having a placeholder in for the amount that's gonna be put in there?
All second.
Okay. Second by Alderman Lender. Any more discussion? All in favor?
All in.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, last but not least, I have put this, I added this resolution. And the city of Livingston does, this is required out of the state of Tennessee to now have a cybersecurity policy and update and review every two years. So this is a resolution that we actually have kind of adopted from, we've looked at a couple of other cities on what their cybersecurity policy is. And we have adopted it. I did have Andre review it. And this is something that is required out of the state of Tennessee. So we do have a cybersecurity company that we came in contract with, starting in 2023. And so they are, they are our cybersecurity company that we use. So it's VC Three. And it's a company that is, it's not a local company, but they do work with a lot of municipalities. And that was passed.
Y'all only read the names by the M-PAS or...
Yes, yes. TML is who, you know, they were, we usually sit at those meetings and they're, they cover a lot of municipalities. Okay, so we have a motion by Alderman Lender to adopt the resolution authorizing us to enact a cybersecurity policy.
I second.
Second by Alderman Elder.
Can you fix the typo and section five?
Yes, yes.
All like that.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we, we, yeah.
I said, you're not gonna put your password on the doorframe, right?
I am not. I am not. Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Is there any other business? And if there's another business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, I have a motion to adjourn by Alderman Dale. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Lender. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes, meaning adjourn.